I'd like to begin this evening's regular Select Board meeting Fri... Wednesday, February 16th, 2022. The time is 6:34 PM. Any changes to the agenda? Bruce?
Can we just, if you wouldn't mind, put me at the end after Mark?
C after A?
A.
C, A, right. A, C will come after Mark's. Any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, let's move forward. Members of the public to recognize. I see Dan Towler. And anybody else? Back TV?
Lisa Schmidt was on, oh, that must be Dan.
And Peter Barris and the Select Board. And Lee Parker wants to come in also.
She's there.
Okay. Hi, Leanne, we got you in the room. All right. At this point next, we're going to open, discuss and vote the bids we see for the repairs needed for the Brookline Meeting House steeple. We received one bid. The advertisement did go into the reformer on Saturday, February 5th and 6th weekend. So I have a copy of that. Okay, estimate for flashing. Okay, estimate for flashing replacement on Meeting House late roof to the steeple base, bell tower, as specified in the scope of work provided by the Meeting House Committee and approved by Town Select Board. Cost estimate for the described project is $9,420. And the estimate, and the bid is placed by Kerry Born. Only problem is there was a requirement to attach your certificate of liability insurance for the work to vote on it. As for everything. Okay. That's enough, if you can look at it. The scope of the repairs. You all have a copy of that. And again, I have what was placed in the newspaper.
Do we know if Kerry has a certificate of insurance on file?
Well, he has to show any challenges he lost pay for that.
No, I know, but I mean, does he already, has he already provided one to us previously? Because he worked for us.
Well, I don't know, I'd have to go take a look.
He worked for us for great, Rich.
If Kerry did the window repair in the Meeting House.
I would think he has an insurance.
He had a certificate at that time. It was two months ago.
Charlie, come on up. Charlie.
What did you say?
Was that me? Are you hearing me?
Yeah, I heard you, yes.
I apologize, I thought I was on mute. No, I was just telling the dog not to eat the plant.
God bless you. So we're just discussing that part of the bid was to...
David, will you take the dog away? The squeaker, he keeps squeaking, squeaker.
All right, you can put yourself on mute, Dan.
Okay. There, that was the only one bid, though. We didn't, we didn't get a bid from the previous, trying to remember.
This is the only bid that was received, and it came in hand-delivered today through the mail.
Jankowicz is who we got.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, so nothing from them.
No.
Were they, may I ask if Jankowicz was notified that this was posted?
Yeah, I, yeah, I called him right after the Select, after our committee meeting and talked to a gentleman named Ryan. He'd worked with Kerry. Kerry was the one that had solicited the bid the last time. And so, yeah, he knew it was happening.
Okay.
All right, so what is the Select Board's pleasure at this time with this bid? The one bid for the repairs of the steeple, which I have a copy of, and you might need to review that.
I mean, did we, you refresh my memory. Did we say in the RFP that you had to provide a certificate of insurance?
A current certificate of insurance is required at the time the bid is submitted to the Select Board.
Okay, and we don't know whether we have a current?
I can dig around, but...
I mean, I guess I would say, if we don't have that, I think we have to table it until we can get that, at least. I mean, I don't know how we can, I don't know how we can actually award this. We don't know even the status. We can discuss whether we think this is an amount that the committee was prepared for, but I don't see how we can really award anything.
I don't know where to...
At the moment.
Yeah, all right, so...
Excuse me, Dot?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any kind of a time date or anything like that? Or when he wanted to start, or when he would have it? Is it still just vague?
I'm gonna read you what he handed in. Estimate for flashing replacement on Meeting House late roof to steeple base, bell tower, as specified in the scope of work provided by Meeting House Committee and approved by Town Select Board. Cost estimate for described project is $9,420.
Okay, so we, he doesn't say anything about when he completed or when he would start it?
Hour, an hour bid, and has to be completed by August 15th.
Right. Okay.
Dan?
Yeah, that's, I, as long as you just answered the question that I was gonna ask. I thought it was deadline to end, but not necessarily want to start.
Correct.
It's, it's to be by, by August 15th.
Yeah, it has to be, steeple needs to be repaired by August 15th.
And that has to do with the money that was given to the committee? Or is this an arbitrary bid date that we had?
This is the date to get the, nothing to do with...
Okay.
I do have a current certificate of insurance for Kerry Born.
Excellent, all right, we do have a...
And expires.
We do have a current certificate, but it will expire before this contract begins. It expires in June.
Safe this June.
Oh, June 2022.
6:15.
It's valid until June, so he does have a valid certificate of insurance on file. He'd have to have that updated, and we'd have to...
Yeah, I guess I don't wanna be nitpicking about it, but if, if we don't have a schedule, I, I still think it warrants a discussion and getting an updated certificate of insurance. Because that, I mean, the certificate of insu, previous certificate of insurance that expires in June is not a valid certificate of insurance if the same work needs to be done by August 15th. Right, and he's not said, and maybe this is the case, I don't know. Maybe he thinks I'll have this done by June, but we have no way of knowing that.
Right.
So, unless he put it in his article.
All right, so how do we deal about the cost of $9,420?
Well, can I ask a first question? So it's very sparse on details, but...
Yeah, the details were the ones we provided.
Or the, I mean, I'll ask the committee. I mean, are you guys, I assume that the answer is yes, but are you comfortable that he understands everything that's to be involved and there's no further details needed than what is written in his proposal?
I would say that the, that there needs to be a contract besides just an approved bid handshake kind of thing because of what happened with the Meeting House issue.
Yeah, okay, and that's fine. I'm just saying that the often we get proposals that will actually detail what the person is going to do. This merely says it will meet the specifications that the Meeting House came up with. So is everyone comfortable that that would be?
No.
I'm not saying that this would function as the contract for the work, but before we consider awarding the work, are we comfortable that that is enough information that he has provided to us?
I guess I would rather have, have had him add that in his own bid, in his own estimate.
I would, I would like to see a specificity to it in terms of, I have no problem with Kerry doing the work. I think he's capable of doing it. However, either we need it to be a little more specific in the RFP, but I would like to see what the breakout is. A, materials, B, labor. And I don't know whether he's expecting payment at the end of the job or while doing the job, whether he's gonna do it once a month, once he starts, or how long it's gonna take him. So I, I think those kinds of details, it apparently includes, well, we specified in the RFP includes list, so he apparently, I suspect he's including the one.
I mean, I think it's fair to assume that he is, that his bid includes everything that we put in the RFP, although I will say his proposal doesn't actually reference the RFP. It references the scope of work from the Meeting House that's like, I assume that's, he means the same thing, but it's a little...
So before we approve it, he needs to...
Clarify it.
Clarify it and, and actually list that he's willing to do what the, what the RFP requested and include a current certificate of insurance.
Okay.
Because the one we have is not, does not cover the full length of time that he's gonna be doing it.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion that we table this, so that I will reach out to Kerry Born and ask him to be more specific in his start time, how payments are expected to be received, the materials he'll be using, and estimate of time of materials. Is that what you mean?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I'm just looking at the bids that we received from Jankowicz and Momini and New Flame Painters, which all, so these don't have any other details except for exactly what the RFP said they would do. They had it break, broken down as to when they would require payment into three or four different time slots, but there's, there's no real detail on these. And I don't know if these were accepted, would you have asked for more detail? I guess is maybe the next question.
Well, to, to your point, those bids do detail, do have detail in them, I think you're saying. This literally has...
She says they do not.
They don't.
No, they don't have it broken down for what's going to, what they're gonna be charging for this part and this part, and labor and materials and things like that.
Yeah, I didn't necessarily think that was necessary.
But this is literally one sentence. It's one sentence. So we're gonna table it, I'm gonna approach Kerry and I'm gonna ask him to rewrite the bid with the specifications as far as... Only needs payment, a schedule, start time, and such.
Do we have a problem now that the bid's really closed?
I can't really hear, I'm, I have hard to hear.
Excuse me, not as hard as hearing a dime or something. Do we have a problem with the bid being closed now? Because we've accepted whatever bids that were gonna be tonight. So is that gonna present a problem if we table it?
I don't think so, I think that...
We're not accepting any more bids.
We're not accepting any more bids. We will accept, I think the Select Board is of the mind to accept the bid if it's rewritten in such a way.
A little bit clarification.
That's a little bit clearer, that, that it's not just an attachment of the new sticker.
So just basically table it. Okay.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna table it for two weeks?
Can I, can I ask a, I mean, from the committee members we have on the, on the call, do you, are you both comfortable with the Kerry doing the work and the price that has been voted for? I mean, does that seem in keeping with what you guys were thinking?
The, the bid from Jankowicz, sorry, Dan, if you were gonna talk, the bid from Jankowicz was a total of... $8,700, and it's two years later. So it seems to me that it's well within the range, given the cost of materials rising.
So, sorry, was the, I don't, I'm not sure I remember this bid you're talking about. So this was a bid for the same work two years ago?
Yeah. Yep.
Thanks.
$8,745 was the bid.
That wasn't submitted to the Select Board, though, was it?
Yeah. Oh, I don't know, I, I have copies here, I would have...
Yeah, no, it wasn't brought to the Select Board, that was probably due research bids, estimate and bid, yeah. So that whatever came to the Select Board.
Okay, okay, well, that's, anyway, when you ask the difference between the bid that they put out and Kerry's bid, it's $1,000 difference approximately.
After two years, and materials have gone up significantly. All right, well, I have a motion on the floor to table this for two weeks upon...
Sorry, did Dan have any feedback on that?
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I, I certainly would in question Kerry's, you know, skills and ability to do the job, and I, I also would in question his, you know, giving as fair a price for the work as he can do. I, I would be curious to know a bit more myself of the breakdown of, you know, how he arrived at that figure, but also it would have been nice, obviously, if more than, we'd gotten more than one bid just for, you know, something else to compare that one with, but we didn't. So, you know, I guess that's all I can say.
The only other comment I'd make is that really without Kerry's help, we wouldn't have been able to write up a description. So he was pretty integral in, in even creating the RFP.
Yeah, I mean, he certainly knows, knows the, the building as well as anybody. He's been up there, he's seen what the problem is, and I'm sure knows how to, how to repair it, so.
Right, I'm sure we can help and get this paperwork in order and to the satisfaction of the Select Board the next, the next meeting that we're having on the 22nd.
No.
No, no, the committee, the Select, the Brookline Meeting House Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about...
But we will...
Will whatever he proposes be available before the day we make the decision? So we have a chance to look at that submitted? Should that be emphasized?
I can ask him to have it so I can make it available to everyone before the next meeting, which is March 2nd.
Which is the organizational meeting for his agenda.
Right. All right, so at this time, I have a motion on the floor to table this to the March 2nd meeting for acceptance, possibly?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, any other discussion?
Yeah, one more thing, we were going to take these...
Discussion, it's discussion for the Select Board members. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor tabling this bid until the March 2nd meeting, at which time we will review a more detailed bid from Kerry Born for this amount.
An updated insurance.
And it's your updated insurance.
Right, the vital thing is the certificate of insurance has to be approved.
Through the whole...
Right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. What, I, what do you, I'm sorry, I had to cut you off there, but it was discussion for the Select Board between the motion and the, and the vote.
I totally, I totally understand. The only comment I'd make is that we were moving ahead with this to get an idea of how much approximately it was gonna be in order to make a decision about the next RFP, which is the painting job, which we will wanna be moving on quickly as well, just as a...
$9,420 is the amount the bid is, and we don't expect it to change, we just expect it to be a little bit more with the insurance certificate and, and a little timeframe on it. Okay, so while you're... It's a matter. Okay, all right, so later on, we'll, we will be talking about the, the RFP for painting, and we're still gonna go, you still want that to go forward tonight in the mail, in the, the newspaper for Saturday? Leanne?
If the board agrees with it, yeah, that was kind of the plan, but I was hoping that we would have a firm, let's definitely go with Kerry before we, we did that. If that doesn't make a difference to you, I'd say I'd love to keep moving ahead so people can plan their summers. You know, these people that might be bidding on this, they might be starting to get pretty busy. So the sooner we get that bid out.
It's on the, it's on the agenda to be voted on for tonight, to be put into the newspaper tomorrow, for Saturday publication.
Excellent.
I concur a little, Leanne, because for all intents and purposes, you're not gonna get anybody until middle of summer anyway. So I don't think you'll have an issue with timing, because while we're talking a two-week span of, we're not gonna read the results of the bid until the 2nd anyway.
I'm gonna be, so both bids will be voted on March 2nd.
So at that point...
Painting and the steeple then.
So I agree with Leanne, I think we should move ahead.
Okay, it's on the agenda. Continue on. Any other questions, committee members? Dan or Leanne?
No, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, review changes, any members of the public? Okay, that's the bids, approved and then it's regular minutes from February 2nd, 2022. Page one. Bruce, were you here? You were here for the February 2nd meeting, correct?
Yeah. It's not on there.
Okay, so...
It's a mistake, I'm gonna...
We have to add Bruce Mello as in, as in attendance for the February 2nd meeting. Any other items on page one? You get over it. Anything?
I did.
Anything on page two?
I just had, well, two things actually. Down under the, under B, warning for informational hearing, in the third paragraph, paragraph, the last line of that sentence says, "The requirement to post the warning for the informational meeting by February 8th." That should actually say the requirement for the ballots to be available by February 8th. Can you see where that is, Peter?
I do. So it should say, "The requirement for the ballots to be available for the informational meeting."
Uh, no, just the, nothing about the informational meeting, actually. It was brought up during that discussion, but it was only about the ballots. I don't remember why we mentioned it, but we did. The ballots had to be ready by February 8th, that was all.
Got it.
Thank you.
Anything else on page two, Stan?
Yeah, under E, table the request for the Meeting House battery, et cetera. It seemed to me that there was a discussion whereby Dorothy Dot had volunteered to obtain clarification from the committee on the number of projects they really wanted to accomplish for the year and the amount of money they were planning on having outstanding in projects for the year. And I didn't know if that was important to him or not.
Where are you?
Under E on page two.
Just what do you want changed?
There was discussion of the scope of three projects of whether to manage certain equipment rentals separately, about delaying the battery mediation until after the repairs, about painting RFP, oversight of the project, the timing. So it's in there, isn't that, isn't that part of that?
Well, I don't see where it mentioned that there was gonna be an inquiry of the committee, that committee, to obtain those answers. We talked about it. Then I thought, near the end, there, there was a volunteer on your part since you remember the committee, you bring it up to them.
We haven't had a meeting since two weeks.
Oh, okay, okay.
The next meeting is on the 22nd.
Okay, so that explains why.
That's, that's...
Irrespective, that's, that's what I recall, but it doesn't sound like it's critical to the functioning of the town soul. I will draw my correction for amendment.
Okay, let's move on to page three. Peter, in the section B, Select Board Report, where the last sentence, it says that they represent Brookline at, not REMC, but R-E-M-C, Regional Emergeecy Management Commission, R-E-M-C is the review code, and...
That must have been autocorrect.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
I also noticed down in Communications, oh, I guess that's enough, there were three pieces of Communications. One, Vermont Old Cemetery Association Legislative Council and Agency of Transportation. I think there was a re after Vermont Old Cemetery Association, and that was just there. So there was just three communications. Anything else on page...
Well, there should be a bullet in front of that too, but I don't recall that there was anything said about re.
No, it was just a flyer, it was just a, a flyer.
Can I just make one comment? This is not a correction, but I wanna pay Peter a compliment. Under E, Road Supervisor Board, in particular, the third paragraph, particularly the end of it, where you summarize the various things we said, is fantastic. That's a fantastic summary of what was said, Peter. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very good, good minutes.
I'll put that remark on my book jacket.
All right.
If you want me to do a foreword or something, I'm in a working attitude.
And number four, any page number four, any edits on here? All right, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of February 2nd as amended. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the amended minutes for February 2nd, signify by saying aye. Will you oppose? Motion passes, thank you.
I'm sorry, who, who seconded?
I seconded.
David, David Jones. Okay. All right, moving on to new business, highway grants. Yesterday, Stan and I spent some time working on some of the contracts for AS Park and Suns, but we also discussed, mentioned that he is going to help take over some of the responsibilities for the highway grants, and David has actually set up an appointment so that we can Zoom with the people at Window Regional for next week on the 23rd, we're gonna do that at 2 o'clock. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Stan Noga to supervise the necessary oversight on current and future grant work done for the town of Brookline's roads and highways. May I have a second? Seconded by Bruce, any discussion? I don't think there's anybody better that can help us make sure that we have our Ts crossed and our Dots, Is dotted, and Stan voted, and in fact, Stan had said that he would sit down with me on office and work on some of these things so that we can both understand the flexibilities that exist, so that, that's great.
That was a very well phrased motion, could you send that to me?
Okay, it's actually, I read it from the new business A.
It's in the agenda.
On the agenda.
Oh, so we need...
I have a motion to appoint Stan Noga.
How much of genius is that?
All right, so that was, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of, of appointing Stan Noga to supervise the highway grants this year, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
All stains inside the person, you know, I don't know if I should vote for myself or not, I can't, but I told me for that reason, I'm willing to accept the position.
Right, and, and again, while we are doing the reorganization and appointments for the reorganization, I'll make sure to, to add that to the list of the other appointments, dog catcher and that kind of thing. All right, so we're gonna move, any, any other new business? Hearing none, let's move to old business. Review and sign the updated contract to AS Park for winter maintenance of the town roads. All right, so... All right, so we, I did, Stan and I sent out a uh, document yesterday for you to read. Today, I did a couple of edits on it, I added footnotes, I made sh- I I organized the three addendums by name and changed, replying to Dumberston, although uh, my copy didn't get changed. Um, but I know David, you have reviewed it, and Stan, you want to go page by page, or?
I mean, I had a copy of what you sent out of the final.
I didn't send anything out for.
Oh, you didn't.
Not today, I didn't do it today, I figured nobody would see it. So um. Did anybody make changes on page one?
Um.
I did, oops.
Yeah, I I just started at the very beginning.
Sure.
So the previous contract we had was, I believe, Brookline Contract for Highway Maintenance, Winter Plowing and Materials.
Contract for services.
Right, and you'll notice in the old contract, there was, there were highway maintenance, contract for highway maintenance is on one line, below that is winter plowing and materials. Because it was a contract for essentially winter plowing and materials. It was not a contract for things outside of winter plowing and materials. This contract now seems to be, and this is fine, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. This now seems to be a contract for highway maintenance as well as winter plowing and materials.
Correct.
You see my point about the distinction?
Not every, not every person whose plows will be responsible for road maintenance other than, yes.
Right, I just mean, this is a contract, when we discussed this before, when we discussed this weeks ago, we were changing the date of a pre-existing contract that was about winter plowing and materials. This is now a much more this is a much broader and larger contractual situation than what we previously had. And that that's fine, I just wanna make sure that's understood and that the vendor may have some questions about that, because it isn't, it is a very different than what they executed with us previously. So to begin with, I don't think it's gonna make any sense for us to postdate this thing, because this is a totally different contract. So, uh, I mean, maybe they'll be okay with that, but quite frankly, I wouldn't be if I were them. Um, so, but so I just wanna make sure that's the, that's, that was the objective. So by adding that comma between highway maintenance and winter plowing, we have made this a contract about more than winter plowing.
Correct.
And that was the intention.
Going through the records and as requested by FEMA, when we were asked, does AS Clark and Sons have our road maintenance contract, a contract for road maintenance? I said they do, and they also do our winter plowing, they've got, they won the bid for plowing, and Sam. I couldn't present the contract, I asked for them to look, the office to look it up, and the one that I did get has that that was signed is more than just snow plowing now. This, this is more than snow, just snow plowing.
It may be, but I would, it it, but that's fine, I mean, now it's a lot more concerned about.
Yes, it is. This one actually is the B L T C uh, suggested contract for for towns to have. And I I've still talked to Archie about it, there's nothing in here um, uh, that we saw that would really.
I, first off, in response to that, I did not perceive that the way the original contract was the one that we modified was structured in a way that was purely limiting that to winter, winter plowing and materials and winter maintenance. Because there's so many other references where we couldn't be more specific, saying winter this, winter that, to make it absolutely clear. So I I perceived it as a, a a mix of summer and winter.
So I guess part of my question would be then, then maybe we shouldn't, can I make a suggestion that perhaps we entertain this as being a new contract that we're entering into with AS Clark? Rather than it being
Retro.
An extension of something retroactively, because quite frankly, why is it, why would it make sense? If this is a contract for highway maintenance as well as plowing and materials, why does it only follow the timeline structure of a, of one winter plowing bid we received from them a year and a half ago? That doesn't make any sense.
The only other alternative might be just to do a a statement of a written, this is a written extension of two years from the previous contract. I mean, we said we.
Oh, I mean, I'm not arguing that this isn't a good idea, that we do this. I'm just saying, I think we're gonna spend it, the the now, the date stuff of it makes absolutely no sense to me. Because it isn't, I mean, we're pretend, quite frankly, we are, and we're on camera doing it, we're we're going to pre- present this as though we're going to pretend that we signed a contract with them
Yeah, I don't wanna.
Last year, or two years ago, a year and a half ago.
Yeah, no, I would, I see what you're saying.
I don't think we should be doing.
No, no, I wouldn't.
And like I say, I wouldn't sign it if I were Clark, because that wasn't what they agreed to.
Right.
Present, now presenting it as a new thing that covers lots of things that it should cover, and I think is good, makes more sense.
See, this this other one, it it, it does say excavation, snow plowing, sanding, trucking, and material supply.
And that's fine, and if we're, if we wanna just, if we wanna, like we talked about before, if we wanna change nothing about this except for postdate it and say, oops, we forgot to get you to sign this back in September. Can we now sign this back, as though we signed it back in September? That's fine, but this, I know you may not think that there's a lot that's different about it, but there are.
There are.
There's a lot that's different about this. So, I mean, it isn't, it isn't the same contract.
It is not the same.
Why are we acting like?
Does this have to do with FEMA? I mean, it's just.
No, and also just we don't have a contract.
Okay, so it doesn't have anything to do with the request of anything that FEMA is asking for.
FEMA is asking for a contract.
Oh, it's love, couple inches, one place. Contract of what?
Uh, uh, AS Clark and Sons with the relationship to Brookline.
Completely.
And.
And it was.
I understand.
So with with everything included, has to be on once, on one one proposal? Okay, so to keep the old proposal, we could just, like you said, sign it and do a separate slip for the additional, rather than having that very long 11-page change?
Okay, what I can see is.
I look at it, where's this come from?
What I can see then is looking at this for when the new fiscal year starts in July, and when we go and and keep our snow bids different, and then putting a cover letter out to AS Clark and Sons extending this original contract.
But how's this gonna fit, how's this gonna meet your requirements of FEMA needs?
Better than nothing.
No, um, I'm sitting at the FEMA meeting, what they're asking for is they wanted to know, does the town have a contract with AS Clark and Sons? And if they do, that's fine. If they didn't, they wanted to know why we didn't bid to work out to other people. So what we're trying to do is tie in a contract and say, through an oversight of our part, we didn't extend the contract and have them sign it. By signing this extension, we are covering ourselves that we didn't have to have the work uh, bid out and take the possibility of FEMA denying some of the the uh, work that we've done.
Yeah.
That's the gist of the.
Okay.
Stan, how do you feel about making a new, just a cover letter to extend this one?
I I have no problem with that, it it's a matter of what the board wants to do in consensus point, a consensus uh, viewpoint. The the issue is the viewpoint. What we're modifying was an agreement that apparently was intended, although not documented in the free theology of it, perhaps efficiently or correctly limiting it only to winter work. Uh, and in fact, I guess in, before I go too much further, I'd like to ask, what parameters were, or what agreements or contracts were in place when the repair work was done after the storm in August of last year? Was there a formal agreement, a contract?
No formal agreement.
Nothing.
It was still, there was no formal agreement.
Okay.
Except this because it has expired.
As a a vendor for the town, he was listed as a vendor.
Yes, emergency vendor.
Situation.
Okay, okay.
As an emergency situation.
Thank you.
All right, and they're specifically listed as a vendor in our emergency management.
So his manager used to justify.
He did justify the easing that, however, in hindsight, we looked back and said, we really should have had this redone. And this led to that, but I think that maybe we just need to simplify and in writing with the current date.
Just need to.
A cover letter saying that this contract has been extended.
So my thought would be, if everyone is happy or content or in agreement with proceeding for the, till September of 22, in the same manner as we have in the last year and a half, then I think David's point needs to be followed up on, and the verbiage, which is could be construed for summer and winter work, be changed so that it's clear, it's winter work that we're all talking about.
Starting September 22nd, new contract.
Right, right, well, then certainly that, but the question then becomes, could this, is he interested in executing any kind of contract that would encompass both seasons, so we don't have to go through anything further to document other events that happen? It might be a solution that he's interested in, it may be a solution he's not interested in. I do, so being sensitive to all parties involved in this. It might be a a brief discussion, maybe uh, the right thing, uh, an option for the board to take. We've got a solution here, we've got a proposed item, uh, and uh, is there anything you're interested in following up? The select board is completely open-minded, we were trying to kill, nothing against birds, two birds with one stone. And uh, and if you're you're interested, we'd like to pursue, if not, we'll be glad to recreate the old documents, just changing the dates.
Actually, I'm gonna have to say that one of the reasons why we were going over this, and it goes from Article 13 to Article 16 on here. And the date of this project is still valid, actually, October 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2022.
Which is.
Terrifying, why you looking?
Number three, this one.
You're not looking at the same one.
Looking at the.
Article, Article 2.
You're not looking at the same one.
Term, Article 3.
See, it looks like the same one as you have.
Are you looking at the same one?
No, it's not.
No.
Oh, yeah, that's the old, old.
The one that was actually filed.
Article.
Well, if that's the case, then you're in good shape.
No, the old, the old one had, uh, wait a minute.
Now, what did you say, three?
I think there were two parts of it, and that's what was so.
This is my copy, and that doesn't show that.
That's what I'm saying, there was two different copies of contracts piled together, and they were not, because they were not synced, so that's why we were trying to fix it by syncing two contracts that were put together. This one does have a date until December 20, 2022. We're fine.
We don't need to show, we don't need to show them anything else, we just show that.
Signed one.
There it is, right there, over.
It's highway maintenance, is it?
Yeah, I think that's the same, right?
Uh, yeah, it does say that.
Right, but it was.
Does it have a signature page attached? It does for yours, I'm sure, it doesn't have yours.
Yeah, part, we'll be showing you a part.
But you've already answered that question anyway, that you do have it.
Now, we do have.
So why are we so crazy about it, we're just putting.
Because the contracts were not consecutive, it was, all right, fine, I will table this and uh.
Wait, we're gonna resolve it, is it appears.
It's fine, it's fine, it's fine, if we're not gonna change anything.
Until September 26th.
Until September, we're fine, we're fine.
If FEMA comes forward, you've got the company's file, right?
Are we just trying to be more efficient?
Once we have the required contract.
Because there was references to certain articles that weren't there, Article 14 is missing, Article 15 is missing. I don't know where they went, but.
I have a feeling you're never gonna hear about it again, there's nothing else.
All right, so um, we will pass on that, and I guess we'll, okay. It's not a very, it's not a very, uh, it's a very simple contract, I think the next year we need to be more.
I think Malcolm just was curious that we had a contract with him and uh, so that we could cover our backsides and go to not having bits that's required by New Jersey. So the purchases, but as Mark uh, as said, we have the emergency part of it, so we're covered that way too, so I don't think FEMA was an issue.
Not, I know, it sounds like they weren't, I mean, the original contract, the one that accepted the emergency.
I believe uh, I heard from Deep Trans said that because they had started this immediately after the flood, there was a 72-hour period where once it's married, we can continue.
Yep.
Yeah, we we were definitely legally in the rights, and and that's not a problem, we're just trying to make the paperwork.
Just trying to dot every eye.
Yeah, and we were, and and so this is something to be updated um, going forward, but we can just go move on. All right, uh, vendor packet contact for the Brookline Meeting House repairs, um. It's a little simple, but besides the required vendor materials that just the treasurer wants, um, I think we need to start, the select board needs to start providing a contract instead of just checking off, accepted on a bid that was received, a contract should have more detail on it than just the paperwork is in. Which is what we're asking Terry to do for the contract here, so that, so we're not, since we're not ready to do vendor stuff, we'll we'll table that as well, so we'll table the vendor packet discussion because there's.
So are you thinking that you're just gonna come up with some standard contract? Then you'll populate the name of the vendor and a brief description of the project and, because I I guess I'm not gonna be there, so it's not my, my, but I would strongly discourage you from setting up a situation where you have to draft particularly involved anything each time somebody has ordered something. Um, just for your own.
But we had a how long when we were with the Round School House, and I don't wanna see that happen again, where we didn't really have an understanding what the contractor was doing over there.
I don't know, the the initial.
Are you saying? Well, right, I mean, in in which situation when we're talking about this?
The one that I was taking over from.
Both, both the the structural issue and the windows issue. There were two separate end of contractors, two separate jobs, but the interaction was virtually verbal. And I translated verbal into a written contract, and then it it apparently, the communication that actually happened was misunderstood on the part of the person that asked and the per- and the contractor. So there's a completely, complete misunderstanding between the two parties.
I guess I'm just gonna encourage you to draft, I don't think it's a bad idea to have a contract, but it should be a template, a super templatized thing, where for each project, you literally populate the name of the person and the name of the vendor and a description, and it has a catch-all statement of something like all work has to be done to the satisfaction of the select work, or will be reviewed at the end, and or I don't know what it is. I'm just saying, I think you're setting yourselves up for a big problem if you have bespoke, if you have to draft bespoke documents every time somebody is going to start doing work. That's, I think, that will be a, and it will also rely on somebody with understanding about to do it every time, where it's, you can have something very fairly generic that you populate in the details.
Stan?
Having, you know, I I agree that it's nice to have a general a form, but I think you ought to block some of the more detail, not that we're reinventing the wheel, but you know, name, address, you know, so that's simple, but I do believe there should be specificity as a part of every contract, without writing a 360-page block. Now, there should be specificity. And you can't avoid that, you can't avoid that, you know, it's like when you're getting, when I, at mortgage, well, mortgage closings, and it was an R mortgage, which is adjustable rate mortgage, I didn't get them fixed rate. An R mortgage, which is adjustable rate mortgages, I didn't give them fixed rate document, I gave them one that pertained specifically to the function they were performing on ours. And I, and I strongly feel that that's necessary. I, I don't wanna over generalize and recreate the generalization that occurred on the round schoolhouse, which upsets some people. Just is not, not, you know, I don't, I disagree.
That's fair, oh, no, that's, that's totally fine, that's totally fine.
Okay, so I do have a letter here, Dear S. Lang, thank you for submitting a bid to the town of Brookline, your bid was accepted. Inquirement for all vendors for the town of Brookline, Vermont, is that the proper following paperwork be completed before any payment can be made for the services, work materials, equipment, et cetera? So on, so forth, and it says before, the following forms are enclosed for you to review, fill out and return to the town of Brookline before being submitted to accounts payable. One, contract for proposed work can be, see attached when attaching a copy of the bid voted on by the select board during a one meeting, now, interesting. Uh, the W nine certificate, certificate of liability, liability hold harness agreement and non-employee work agreement. These are the forms that we need, um, after the bid is, is awarded, just step by I. All right. So. So where are we at?
Information.
See? All right, so vendor pack contract for, I have to see, town informational meeting Wednesday, February twenty-third, we assume at six thirty discussion, so, um. All right, so all of us will be meeting here in the town office, I hope we can get here a quarter to six the latest, so we can all be set up and make sure that the. Um, the material, the equipments is working properly, um.
Okay.
As we go through the different items on the agenda or on, yeah, on the agenda from point, um. If there is a question from the audience, it will be directed, I will accept it and then, um. Try to answer it, and if there's someone else here who would like to to raise their hand and answer that particular question, that would be great. Um, I will need to get the appropriations package together and make sure that they're in the order that they're going to be, uh, owed on so that I can. Have that in case there's any question about the appropriation, I'm guessing that's in a folder.
Yeah, and we also, it's on the ballot.
It's on the ballot too.
And the ballot's on the website, but I'll give you a copy of the ballot also.
Right, I have a copy of the ballot, I mean, a copy of the actual appropriation letters when they say that they have done this and they've done that for the town of Brookline, in case someone wants to know.
Oh, how they expect to be.
Right, the other one is Sarah Lane from Sevens is going to come online and she's going to be available to answer questions if anybody has any.
Can I make a point about the ballot?
Questions about their one thousand five hundred ninety dollar appropriations request.
Can I just make a point, you need to follow the informational here and more than half the ballot.
Yes, that's, I know.
You shouldn't have, I mean, if, they're the same, but, but that isn't what the, that isn't what we're.
Yeah, I just have a copy of the ballot, but I. Yeah, call to order, dishes, yeah, review and discuss.
Okay, so, we're talking next Wednesday at six fifteen, we're gonna be there, when is the town books coming?
They're mailed, and today you should be getting them.
Hopefully, people will in the next few days or something.
But they are on online, yes.
No, we. I know they're printed, because I got, I got the overs.
So I would think that they would have them by this weekend at the latest, today's two, uh, Wednesday, and they've been mailed out and it's all local.
Yeah, and they went through slash, so they should arrive the next week.
All right, I can send the note out to Julie to remind people that they, that it is online at this time and also expect a hard copy in the mail on the next day or so, yes, sir.
Did you want me to do a summary of the, uh, employment rationale that was utilized at our discussion back when? In terms of what other towns had, without getting into too much detail, but something summary, send it out by this weekend, so it's time to look at it. So that there's some explanation in above and beyond, it was essential and necessary in our opinion. Uh, did you want any kind of data, does anyone feel unnecessary?
Relate to the people that were, points that were not filling or.
No, no, in regard to the increase in, uh, across the personnel.
Yeah, I mean, a suggestion I would make last year when I did this.
Uh-huh.
I made notes for myself, because I ran the meeting and administrated it. Um, I made notes for myself about basically every article. And if there were budget increases, I made notes about where that money went and to Sam's point, some thinking about it. You know, I didn't end up having to use most of those notes because you and Dan were the only people who showed up. But it would be a smart idea to be prepared for that.
I think what, what Stan says, putting in writing was just being prepared in case for.
I agree. So whatever.
Well, so you're gonna make notes, I think David's idea is fantastic, because if, I, you know, I think that I would do the same. Or, you know, in your shoes, his shoes, I would make a note on the topic, if there's something that might raise a question. Uh, where someone might get confrontation perhaps, not knowing who and what in today's world is gonna get excited.
Well, the other thing is just to make, I mean, keep in mind, there are thirty-one articles, every single one of those has to be read. Any points that need to be made have to be made, and then every single one of them has to give one or more people the opportunity to comment on them. This could be a very long thing, so anything that could be done to. Make it move more quickly by being ultra-prepared for everything is probably a wise.
This, this strikes me the memory when we were going through the, uh, the information for the, for the solar stuff at the school. And I think you all made really valid points, in light of the fact that we had such a marked increase in the budget, last year we didn't, we level funded it pretty much. So we didn't, we're not gonna get people from, excuse me, a lot of questions, but I think that being extra prepared in this instance doesn't hurt.
I'm, I'm just thinking either that or, uh, whoever had documentation gathered in those specific meetings. Make notes to themselves and if the question you, you are looking and thinking about responding, perhaps the person around the table that dealt with that issue can. Offer you a, a comment to be assistance in the matter, however, it's easiest for it to happen, but I think it's got a good point, thirty-one articles. I think, was it, I'm not sure if it's, we have to allow two minutes time to each person, the seminar I, I went to last week online, that's made reference to leaving a timeline, I believe.
Well, I mean, our rules of procedure that we adopt every year give people, give members of the public two minutes to comment on something. What we, the comment we made at the beginning when explaining to people rules, and I have suggested to Dodd it would make sense to do it again this year, is that. Hopefully, we don't need to enforce that, but that is a rule if we, if it is needed to be enforced. An awful lot of these articles will go by and no one will have any question or comments.
Correct.
But the ones that do, it won't, you know, the more, and the other thing, because it's an electronic thing. Merely the process of identifying the people who are, who want to ask something, getting them to understand how to unmute themselves or mute themselves, blah, blah, blah. The back and forth of that will eat up a lot of time very quickly if there are a bunch of people. Again, for all we know, two people might show, but you don't have.
Um, they are told that they had questions that they wanted to have reviewed, to email them ahead of time. And I haven't gotten any yet, but, um, so I'm not sure, answering your question, your question was, should you go on the listserv and send out a detailed information about the changes in the. I, I don't think so.
I think you guys, that wasn't what he was asking me.
Oh, okay.
Not at all.
He was saying sending information for your benefit.
To, to, to anyone else here that might be interested in having that, in order to, if you're gonna conduct it and no one else is allowed to speak there.
Oh, no, everyone's allowed to speak, I will, if, if somebody asks a question, let, let's say it was on the agenda, they asked about the salt sand shed, if it was on the agenda. I would say, I would ask David if he would share some information.
Right, I mean, the chair needs to lead it, and if you want other people to answer something, you need to ask the other people to do that.
Correct.
Is the way it should, I mean, obviously, that's the way all meetings should work, but I think truly this one should work that way.
Yes.
So maybe that in and of itself is answering the question.
Right, if, if, if you feel, everybody study up and if there's an area, um, that you feel, you know, losing handle on.
The big part is the budget, that's what my soul's appropriations.
Right, I mean.
Where all the actors come in.
The thing I would suggest, you, I mean, you have printouts from when we went over it, or when you get your copy of the town report, or. Oh, wow, I don't know if God wants to get away with this one, so I just gave it on.
Yeah.
You know, on the, the budget increase, decrease line, very clearly calls out things where we increased the budget. So my suggestion would be to look through all of those.
Yeah.
And understand the rationale for why those things increase. I mean, quite frankly, the highway ones, though that's the majority of the money. Those in many ways, other than perhaps the salaries to Sam's points, might, that might warrant a little bit more preparation. Most of the rest of them are literally the cost of everything has gone up and we think is going to continue to go up. And quite frankly, we haven't been budgeting enough for highway repairs, and so that's why an awful lot of these things have increased. But, you know, on the operation side, there's things that there should, you know, should make notes about.
I'm sorry, I couldn't do some of that.
Now, can I just, in my role here, I will control the speakers like I do here at the select board over here. That we've been doing, you'll be the select board and then when you ask to speak to someone, I will just, um.
Unmute them or what?
That's great, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, I have.
Yeah, basically, I think everyone will be, will be unmuted. And then if something gets out of control, I have the ability to slow them down, so that.
No, they have.
No, everyone will be muted.
Muted. They're muted.
And the meeting is set up so that everybody will come into it muted, right.
But we, we have the ability to unmute them.
Well, here's the thing, we do, as long as, and there's talking points that describe this. Because I had to describe it in detail last year. You can't necessarily guarantee that you will have the ability to unmute and mute someone when they come to unmute someone.
Right, it depends on what they're doing.
I mean, we've set, I've set up the meeting so that when people, when people log in, they will be presented with a button that says. Do you wanna let the moderator unmute you? Hopefully, they'll say okay, if they don't say okay, it's possible that they could be muted and you won't be able to unmute them. So the process really should be when you decide who's next in line to talk, you say to them, so whatever your name is. Please unmute yourself and ask your question or make your comments. And then you have to tell them to mute themselves again afterwards, and we have to explain to people who might dial in on the phone. What the key commands are for muting and unmuting and raising your hand and stuff like that, I mean, there's.
Okay, so I'll just, whatever, whatever you say.
Potentially a lot involved in.
Do the best that we possibly can.
We'll be fine. Film it a lot.
Last year, you weren't in the same room?
I wasn't here last year.
Yeah, we were, uh, yeah, I was in this room and Dave, Dave and I were here, I believe, we're, uh, we're used to, now, I was here by myself.
Whatever, you were on the phone.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you're all on the phone.
I was here by myself, yeah.
Everybody else is.
Kind of where do that work.
All right, well, we will see how it goes.
I mean, I, I don't wanna be alarmist about it, but it is one of these things that if. Six people show up and it could get, these things can get out of control pretty quickly, but can. Um, it would not be a bad idea and I would be happy to be a remote person in doing this and we could maybe all take part in this. Wouldn't be a bad idea to do a little test run of the logistics of making sure people raise their hands, understanding what that means. In the participants' view, muting and unmuting people.
What do you mean, do a trial run with us here?
Yeah, I mean, we could all, at some point, you could be here, the two of you could be here running the meeting. The four of us could be all home and just do a trial, like, okay, four people log in and. One of us at, one of us raises their hand or two of us raise their hand, you have to identify people, blah, 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 just.
We want us.
The process of doing it, but I'll be honest, I don't, you guys aren't prepared to do this, really not. I, I don't think you really understand the logistics of how it's gonna need to probably be run.
Probably not.
If a bunch of people show up.
Yeah.
And that's fine, I mean, it's, it, it mean, it just, it's, you know.
What would you recommend?
It could go south real quick, I mean.
What, what would you recommend, would you rather help to control the computer?
No, I wouldn't, but I'm offering to, I mean, forget it, I'll, it's, I'm sure it'll be fine.
I'm trying to.
No, I'm sure.
Well, well, we, we don't wanna have that, because kind of what you're applying is to be here eight hours, and that's what you gotta turn into. You know, they could turn into that, I mean, we don't know how.
I mean, I mean, in regional commission, we had twenty-five people attending, all the pictures were up there on the board. And they controlled pretty good, you know, uh, they ran relatively smooth, people understand there's a couple of hiccups and so forth. Um, is it gonna be a little testy, probably, but, um. Yeah, and I know what Dave's saying, it can get out of control pretty easily, but if the person who is hosting the meeting. Can control that person, I think that's ninety percent of the.
Yeah.
Well, do what the best we can do, I, I, I don't know what else to say, um, no, I haven't, I haven't, I'm a meeting with more than you all.
It's the same thing as what you're seeing here, except you're gonna see, instead of three squares, ten squares, maybe fifteen squares, and eight person will have a.
Yeah, I think I'm meeting before, sure. All right.
May I, may I make a remark?
Yeah, certainly.
Um, last night, I was at the Wyndham School Board meeting, uh, virtually, and Mr. Anton was. On the side, running the equipment and monitoring when people's hands were up. And very graciously letting the people in the meeting, the chair, know when somebody had a, had a hand up and stuff like that. It's very, very useful to have one person whose job is only to run the technology. And let them handle the audience, and then the people that are running the meeting will just run the meeting as usual.
Well, that makes.
So that would be done.
That would be fine, and you can have this.
Okay, so I'll just, uh, I'll read up on my Zoom again and I'll try it on the school.
Thank you, Peter, that's very helpful.
Yeah, thank you, okay.
All right.
Hopefully, we don't go out of our hours.
No, I, I don't.
No.
All right.
Sorry, seven to run.
I mean, I will practice, I'll, I'll.
The information, meetings.
I, I keep the door open.
We'll move on to item D, contract with Suzie's Little Peanut's daycare, um, uh, Suzie sent me an email today apologizing, she says it's on her desk, she will get it and mail tomorrow to us, so. She, she's mailing it, it's signed, it's signed, so she apologized, so that will be tabled to the next meeting, to sign that contract.
That's just a sign.
Right, um, review approved for the posting of the RFP for the painting of the Brooklyn Meeting House steeple, that was the same, um. One that was sent back, no changes were made to the meeting house, agenda, meeting house RFP.
We're, we're.
DR number seven.
Yeah.
D, we just said is tabled because Suzie says peanut, and then E, review and approve.
Right. Oh, I don't have any, uh.
Oh, you printed out the one that I said, does anybody have any changes for the, I sent out an agenda Saturday and said, anybody have any changes? I got no responses back, so I, I sent a new one on Monday morning with a couple of updates that I saw that.
Thank you, can I copy this?
I would report. Thank you very much. All right, we're, we're trying to roll on here, I apologize.
That's fine.
That's fine, okay, so the posting for the RFP for the painting of the Brookline Meeting House steeple, anybody have a problem? I will put it in the newsroom for printing on.
It's, we read about this.
Same one last week, I didn't touch it, I didn't touch any of the wording.
Okay.
Should we ask for specific, maybe later materials, I just, I do not have to go through.
We do with the last thing, um.
Write down, Charles, thank you.
Oh, you're just asking the person to respond that, but they don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I know, I know Momma will, because he does.
Um. Well, the RFP, this, it sort of says to be specific, but, uh, I don't know.
Does?
As specific as I guess you can.
Do you have it?
I don't have it, I thought I had it here, I probably do, but I don't have it.
Well, is it done out?
So you were going to make the, you were going to, you made a few changes here?
No, no changes to it.
Do you have a copy of it?
Yeah, I do, we talked about there being changes here, I mean, I got some confused, we tabled it, so we now.
The lift is, can change the name of the man lift, is a high reach lift.
Okay, and you took out the line about itemizing the expense?
Yes, here it is, I have it, uh, bids are being solicited for the painting of the exterior of the historic Brookline Church steeple. The current, a current certificate of insurance is required at the time the bid is submitted to the select board. Work must be completed by October thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and inspected at satisfaction of the select board. That is in materials, exterior painting, provide a suitable height to lift to access the side and head rolls of the steeple. Itemize this expense, please, I can drop that, I, we were talking about dropping that, all right. Scraping, uh, scraping all loose and falling, falling paint.
Failing.
Failing paint, sealing nail heads and knots, oil primer to be used in any new or exposed wood, repair and re-nail any loose flatboard caulking. Two coats of acrylic finish paint, shutters will be scraped, primed, and painted with two coats of finish paint. The town reserves the right to reject any inhaled bids to, and to accept the bid it deems most favorable to the town. Send bids to the town of Brookline PO, box four oh three, Brookline, Vermont, or hand deliver to seven thirty for Grassy Brook Road, Brookline, Vermont. Attention, Brookline Meeting House repairs, sealed bids will be opened at six thirty-five PM on Wednesday, February, uh, March second.
You won't, you're going to have to change that.
March second, right?
Well, no, you're going to, you won't be able to open it at six thirty-five, because you have to do your organizational meeting first, so. You're not, because you have to open the bids for a while, if you're giving it on March second, so you're going to make, I mean, I don't know, seven thirty-five? Seven thirty?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because you.
Because you gotta introduce, you gotta do all that, you gotta do, do all the, one of those.
Yeah.
And then also time to approximate, you have time to approximate. All right, so I will pull out the, uh, itemization, I will change that time and the date.
You s-, you said at the last meeting that, excuse me, selling meal heads, selling, excuse me, sealing meal heads and knots and repair, and re-nail any loose flatboard with standard operating procedure for, I don't want to choose my words wrong. Someone said that that's what payments normally do.
They can, they will, they will not find that on.
Who said that?
Carrie Bourne.
Okay, I got my answer. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, before, not for now, I want to make a copy of it before we go on.
All right, um, do I think you can make a motion to put this in? No, so with the date changed, and time changed, and dropping the itemization, um, I will post Thursday for grant this weekend. All right, um, Tom Clark, Guy Tienza.
Um, everything's going smoothly, we have absentee ballots that have been, um, mailed out. We've had twenty-one requests so far out of the, uh, three hundred and four, four hundred and forty-two registered voters, and, um, things have been looking good, uh, hopefully, uh, we had a, we've sold twelve animal out licenses so far. And, um, the real estate market is starting to cool off, so we're all set, we're all getting ready for the big election. I would like to remind the Board of Civil Authority, which includes the select board, I will need some help counting on the twenty-eighth of the ballot, so I'm hoping you'll be able to have time to consider that. And I just want to also let you know that Jim Condos, the Secretary of State, is retiring at this year, so that's a big, um, change in the Secretary of State's office, but he's done a great job in the last ten, eleven years, and, um, it's going to be hard to replace a man of that magnitude, but, uh, he's done a good job. So, uh, everything's good, um, just keep those requests coming in, you can do it online, uh, you can do it in the office, and, um, hopefully, we'll see a big turnout for this, uh, town meeting, which hopefully will be the last time that we have to do it by the sky and ballot. But, uh, in light of what's going on with the coronavirus, I think it's in service of town in its best way.
Thank you, Guy, I have two brief statements, um, a nuisance dog report, um, dealing with it last week, and, uh, we have not found the dogs, I'm not sure if they're Brookline dogs or not, but we put out a post on listserv, a couple of residents contacted me that we saw the dogs running. We haven't caught them, they did end up going back to a chicken coop and killing a half dozen birds this week, so that's an issue.
These were the ones that were up on Pinnacle?
Yes, the Pinnacle, yes.
It's all chosen.
Mm-hmm, so, somebody sent me a video of the dogs running through in their security camera, black lab and a white pit.
Where was that?
Up, up on, I'll say the Athens Road area of the Brooklyn, thousands, house numbers on the dirt road, where, so, yeah. Um, the health officer report earlier this year tried to help a resident with a letter to the Department of Agriculture who got pesticide risk concerns. I did receive an update from the Department of Agriculture with two years' worth of reports, and it seems that he's, pretty much the case is closed. Um, that, that there, the safety regulations have been followed, and, um, so that's done, I will make copies of the report and put it in, in a file, the same is with the nuisance dog report, I'll do that as well. Um, last thing I have here is we got to notice that the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds action is to be required as far as, uh, photo recognition and, and, and identifying, um, town, town officials responsible for doing some of these reports, and, um, we have a few weeks, I thought it had to be done sooner than, before the end of the month, but actually, it's in March, or April fifteenth.
April, April.
April fifteenth, so I get a little bit more time to review it, and, uh, I'll probably be in touch with Wyndham Regional, because they have, uh, they're sort of working with BLTC and, and, uh, the community towns to, to understand what do we have to do to sign into some of these portals. All right, uh, we're going to move C down to grant update, um, we changed the agenda, building commission will go last. Uh, grant updates, Dan?
Well, as we, uh, referenced earlier in the meeting, David was kind enough to set up a, a meeting, thoughtful enough, set up a meeting with the people involved with the grants we currently have, so we're looking forward to that. Uh, I think, uh, last week on Thursday, uh, I came down and looked at some of the grant metrics that were readily available. I think Guy had in a booklet, a ring binder, uh, a summary of the salt and sand shed.
Yeah, so.
Contracts, agreements, et cetera, and did not get a chance to look at the drawings that are in the note cabinet behind Guy's current sitting position. And I had asked of Judy Echempura, the Assistant Treasurer, to come look at paperwork that she's been involved with keeping track of and storing, she, uh, emailed me back indicating that she can meet, uh, this coming Friday, the eighteenth. And, uh, she has recommended between, I believe it's two, two and four, and I, I responded this afternoon, since I got the email this morning, that I would be likely to meet with her at two o'clock, so I'll be here at two o'clock, and I sent to her, we'd be ahead of filing here, so. We'll go over the final, the final in detail, uh, at that time, and, uh, I suspect that lock is locked when you're not here, so. What I'll try to do is next week, on Tuesday, come in and take a look at that.
That's, uh, that, I keep that unlocked.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, because no one misses.
All right, uh, I know that we had gone over a, a printout that I had presented at the last select board meeting regarding two different reports that the state doesn't have this having completed in the past, and I believe you were going to complete one of those as of last Thursday, the tenth, if I, last, was it the tenth, uh, last February? Yeah, the tenth, last Thursday.
Was it the sixty, Act sixty or something?
No, the T sixty?
T sixty?
Um, I, I spoke to, uh, Mike about that, and, uh, I don't know if he's filled it out, but the, I think we have some time on that yet. We have some more time, because that's basically, explains the expenditures that we've done on the class two, class three, class four roads, you know, we have to spend, uh, three hundred dollars, and it's basically a summary of what we spent on those roads. And there is some more time, uh, before we have to submit that.
Yeah, and it, I'm trying to think of the, there was a certification or something.
Well, there was also, uh, where we had to, uh, with the Agency of Transportation, what we were going to post the roads for during mud season, and so, but that was another one.
Right.
And that was the one that we thought that we had to file with the Agency of Transportation, but in reality, uh, when I looked at it, it was filled out wrong, uh, and this basically is the form for posting the roads.
Right.
And that's what we have to do, I'm going to talk to Mark about that.
Right.
Because when I looked at that other one, it was, it was, it was incorrect, it was just some, um, misinterpretation of what we were supposed to do.
There were several that were briefly, there's a.
Those were the three.
Yeah, there's also a capital, what's, anticipated capital expenditure form, which is sometime in the near future to be completed.
Uh.
Which they don't have record of us having on file with them, then there's the compliance with the state's road and bridges criteria. I don't, I'm not sure they had, that we had sent that.
The bridge and road standards, uh, that's another thing that's coming up for renewal, but again, uh, Wyndham Regional will help us do that, because there's, there's been some changes, some new things that have been added and so forth, but, um, the Wyndham Regional will be very instrumental in helping us get those, including the T sixty, because I'm concerned with that, because it's basically what Samar did last year, she filled out initially, she put out how much we actually spent on the roads, and I'm not sure if that's what they're looking for.
Right, and then the T sixty, I think it's due forty-five days after the.
Town meeting.
Town meeting, so.
Yes.
That, that one, we definitely have time for, uh, so, in essence, I guess the summary is, guess what I should say, is we all have a handle, so to speak, and we're checking with each other, it looks like, to make sure.
And everything's within our grasp, you know, with the timeframe and so forth, and like I say, act, I mean, the Wyndham Regional Commission is going to be really instrumental in getting us in compliance.
Right, so we got help from a lot of different places coming, uh, so I intend to coordinate with everybody here and getting whatever done that needs to be done, and and getting it logged on the state, our website, that we are in compliance with all the things that need to be filed, and, uh, hopefully, can take advantage of the max of the discounts that we're eligible for.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your help, it's been, been very reassuring, you've been tremendous, so, I've been very open-minded and helpful, and, uh, so, it's been fun so far.
Yeah, Dave, uh, Dave with the, uh, salt shed has been really helpful.
Yeah.
That salt shed has been just, uh, firing out of control at this point, uh, I, I'm not sure how that's going to play out, to be honest, yeah.
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 I hear you, okay, um, anybody else have another report, and then before we go to Mark, and then we'll go to Bruce?
Well, I guess I would just add, and we'll, you guys will, will get a little bit of a status about this when we talk with V-Trans and Wyndham Regional next week, but Ron Bell keeps saying in the next few days, he's going to have incorporated the final changes that V-Trans wanted. Um, and we're probably almost at the point of being able to put it out for bid, which Margot will work on doing that, there will also be, and this will probably come up in our quick discussion next week, there's, eventually, there would be, there will be a need for a, uh, inspection engineer on the project, and assuming the board decides to do this, which I assume you will, there's, uh, there's a lot of motivation to probably jointly hire someone between Newfane, Lord's Borough, and Brookline, because Newfane and Lord's Borough are also building salt sand sheds.
Yeah.
Or hoping to build salt sand sheds, just like us, Ron Bell has done the plans for all of them, Margot at Wyndham Regional is the project manager for all of them.
Really?
So, this now becomes an opportunity to combine forces and hopefully be able to hire an inspection engineer that can be shared across each of the projects and make it more feasible.
Has she spoken to you lately?
But, that would be.
David, has she spoken to you lately?
I'm sorry?
Has she spoken to you lately?
We've exchanged emails, I mean, there really is, honestly, the, the project has been in the state of either waiting for Ron Bell to make changes, or V-Trans to give him feedback on those changes for the last several months. Um, but I think it sounds like it might almost be at the end of that, and I must be ready to.
Bid?
Bid.
All right, well, before we move on to that, I did receive a text from Mark Bills about a couple of suggestions he had, and do you want to share that now? This is probably the more appropriate before we get into your report, I don't know if we can.
This may be too late, but.
Can I just stop you before you even say, if, if this is, if this has anything to do with changing the structure of the project, it is too late.
It is too late.
It's not going to work.
It's not the building, it's the location.
Even that's going to.
That's, I, I, I can't imagine that that's possible to do at this point, I mean, this has gone through months of reviews with.
Environmental study.
A lot of people, I mean.
Changing that location of the driveway so that the better sight view for entering and exiting.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Just, just want to, just get it out.
I brought this up was the fact that we're now storing crushed stone to work on our springtime soft roads, and this year, we decided to stockpile and put a tarp over it, so I've been trying to think, you know, how can we, uh, do this differently, because, um, it, it's working, but I'm thinking, there's going to have to pay somebody to tear down the old shed. And I'm thinking, well, maybe we can, uh, store the crushed stone in the old salt sand shed, relocate the new salt sand shed to the south end, and another reason for this was I've seen the blueprints, and I got thinking about, uh, when the snow comes out the roof, I don't know who decided where to place this, but it's going to fall in front of the old building, and I guess you can use equipment to remove the snow, but it, it just seems the odds of the snow would fall in front of the entrance to the old shed. And also, the way that the, the shed is facing, most of your weather comes in at an angle where your snow and rain is going to go into the shed with the open doors, so I think if if it were placed at the south end of the property, facing the old building, when trucks come in to, to dump their material, they have plenty of room to drive toward the old shed and back directly across the car, so, right now, it's been tough, because a truck with a trailer coming in makes it very tough to maneuver the trailer that gets lined up with the building. So, by having it completely down on the south end, plenty of maneuverable room to, to get a tractor, trailer, truck, and stuff. So, you know, maybe it is too late, and I, I just wanted to, uh, you know, prove a couple of points about the way it was positioned, is it favorable, and the fact that if you don't have to tear it down, it could be used, uh, reused for future materials and other instructions.
I mean.
Yeah, I don't, uh.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Change the whole, you can change it.
You can ask, but.
Well, and I'll say, I'm, I'm not asking anything about this, I'm done with this project.
Yeah, I got you.
You all can take it over now.
Okay.
Um, I mean, it, it went through an environmental review.
Yeah.
Months, if not a year ago.
And yeah, the.
I can't imagine that if we were to propose changing the location of it, I assume that would all have to happen over again.
Right.
Now, whether there's a way for any of that stuff to be done, I guess is a question that could be asked of Chris Hunt at V-Trans.
Yep.
Or of Ron Bell, or both, but.
Oh, wouldn't hurt to ask a question, but.
So, just, so there's no confusion, I am not communicating anything else about this project.
Yeah, you got it.
So.
Stan?
I, as, I'm trying to fill, or choose a dude, and I'd be willing to ask the questions, although I wouldn't be, um. My, my sentiment on it is that, looking at the contract, it's been partially fulfilled, and looking at the hours that just Mr. Bell himself has pointed to this.
Right.
And looking at the categories of environmental positioning and regrading of the lab lot, and so on and so forth. It, it, it would certainly increase the costs. Uh, I suspect at a minimum.
Asking.
I would hope that if they're doing any kind of environmental survey, that when they came in, they've got a map that shows, well, everything would be okay here. Uh, since it's, I think they've even measured it at sixty-five feet from the edge of the new shed to the base of the slope where the stream begins, but it's not failing me. So they made those kinds of locations. Uh, but, you know, I, I'd be willing to ask, the worst they could say is, yeah, you're reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, I realized, yeah, like I have, I, but it's. This has been on my mind a while, and I thought about, you know, using the old shed for storage or fresh stone would be ideal, keep the stone dry and not throw some weather.
Yeah.
So I was, that, that was weighing on my mind, and then, you know, thinking about how that snow is gonna be in front of the other shed, it's, it's not, I don't know how they designed it, and then I'm thinking, well, no, when I'm here at the shed, the weather's coming in, it's gonna go right in the doors, and and it's not an issue.
Yes, no, I, I, if, if the board doesn't pump, feels it, it like a, a quick inquiry, I don't mind it.
Do you might, do you might have time to do that before our phone Zoom meeting?
Yes, yes, I'll try to do it between now and like, you know, between now and possible this time. You just ask the question, you know, look at, you know, call whoever I need to call and say, this is a.
I mean, I don't think the building structure itself has to be changed at one bit, it's just.
But if it, if it's getting closer to the stream on the south side, that's gonna probably throw the, a nail into the coffin.
Yeah, I would, I would believe that it would, you know.
I, I do know that when initially we were looking at take the town taking back the school, the elementary school and the church, one of the thoughts at the time was, well, what if we separated them off? Made them two separate entities instead of contiguous owned by the town so that we could divest ourselves of one or the other if we chose to. And I did call someone at the state, and their comment was that you're looking at, in that case, it was between three and fifty five, three thousand and fifty-five hundred dollars to do the survey and the paperwork to, to make that alteration, or to bring the separation. Now, this is the same lot, but the building already positioned by a design engineer of sorts. Whether or not it makes a big difference, whether it is on the map where they placed it, and I did bring the map with me today on the line just because I knew that. Or whether they can move it south and not install it to any other access, other than, somebody's now gonna measure the distance between an existing shed that is not gonna be torn down and the string, I mean, it may be that easy, I don't know. But I'd be happy to check, well, I, I suspect I'll know within an hour's conversation, talking to its people, that it is or it isn't gonna happen.
Sure, no, I just, uh, something I wanted to bring up, and whether it goes anywhere after tonight, it's just.
And I, just on the surface, speaking for myself, to design it so that the snow falls off the new building and further the doors of the remaining building, that's a young chenille.
I, I don't know who made the decision.
Archie was instrumental in designing that, uh.
Yeah, so.
Same, I don't know.
We'll ask, yeah.
We'll see.
Alright, um, anything else besides in the grant updates? If not, we'll move, let Mark finish up on his road supervisor report.
Yeah.
Okay, Mark, anything else on your, your road report?
Uh, since the last time we met, um, replenished one, a new load of salt for the roads. Um, I also had, I talked about calling around for equipment for summer rental. And I never got a call back, so I needed a second call. The reason I didn't get the call back was the person who I used to deal with, so, with the company. A new person was hired and they're, they're getting me the information that I asked for the first time through. So I'm waiting to hear back on rental rates. And if we can rent something with a mortgage as well as digging. Talked to Archie tonight about the possible thawing of our roads tomorrow with rain and warm temperatures, and he said if I needed him, just to call and he could help. In any way. And I guess that would be all.
Alright, thank you, Mark. Bruce, your turn.
Okay, good. Okay, what's going on, I'll try and reorganize my thoughts. Uh, first wanted to say that there's a lot, I think a lot positives coming out of what's going on with the scene at this, this school in the last couple of months. But leading up to that, I'm really trying to come to a resolution of what happened up to that point in time. And years ago, I made up this little list of the amount of select boards that we had between nineteen eighty-nine, when the school was open Labor Day, till two thousand and ten, um, when the WCSU took over, and July two and twenty fourteen, when we took it back over for a gavel. And I was ready to throw stones at everybody, and I said, I really did some thought of thinking about it, and a lot of the help was helped by Hyrum, and Hyrum Matt from Code and Coda, because he made me aware of his relationship with Brookline Elementary School, with the WCSU, and the people involved. This is kinda what I found, first off, I wanna say, there's a lot of people that contribute and help in this town, and everybody in here in this building did. Whether it was cleaning out the school, whether it was the weekend, uh, the day after Thanksgiving that you and I rebuilt that door and you went the day after and finished it. The, the weekend, uh, Memorial Day, when you helped me with pulling the plywood out, but I, but I had to hit a circle and saw it to the damn plywood for three weeks in order to get the damn thing out, it was all a great help, we've all contributed. I think what was missing here was leadership, and that's kinda why I had the idea two years ago of having a building maintenance manager. And it wasn't really about me, it was about control of the buildings. Saying that, these two buildings will be finished pretty soon. I've been consulting with Mark a little bit to finish off what's left of these, to, I mean, the round, round hole, round schoolhouse and the town office. Very happy and content and pleased with what's going on with the church, they're really trying fervently, look, from a historical sense, the end's really big into that, which I haven't had time to pick our brains to understand everything that you've found out, which I did, dripped and crabs. But also, what they're trying to do to rebuild the building, I, they're moving forward very well, and uh, I might not agree everything low by low of what they're doing, but generally speaking, it's great that they're doing that, she's taking committee's taking the bull eye at once, in fact, try to get things done. Anyway, bringing a war up to present, I think those who ignore history are who could, could repeat its failings, and that's what I'm trying to avoid. And I think there's a, a number of instances where I could've, didn't realize what was happening, I'm not using that as an excuse, but there were some failings there. Saying that, I had really extensive discussions of hiring Matt a little, went on that building. And what happened prior to even me being involved, or the select board in twenty fourteen, was the conversations that were happening, the communications that were happening between Code and Coda at that time, um, the WCSU when they were involved, Pat Mace when he was involved, he's the maintenance guy for New World. Uh, and I was even trying to think back Brookline Elementary School, because he was involved, Brookline Elementary School as well. So I started thinking about, I said, what was going on here? And what I came up with, I think, is that Joyce Taylor Pamela was probably principal up till the end, though, I don't, really don't know that.
Yes, she was.
So I would imagine if there was a problem, she called either, and, uh, I have a question for you, when did you start being town clerk? Two thousand and eleven, I believe. Okay, so that was even prior to you most likely, because two thousand and ten was the end, I think. So I think what was happening here was, something, if there was a problem with her, either she called Penny or she called Pat Mace, which is part of WCSU and so forth. I don't think, I have to go crazy about. Pretty easy to see what happened here, but Hyrum was quite specific that he had a hard time getting confirmation on work that was gonna be done, he kinda had to pacify the WCSU all the time. Oh, can we spend this money on this zone valve? It got really bogged down. Okay, entered the twenty fourteen board. You and I were all there. He did a wonderful job, I said this to you before, about the analysis of that building. That spearheaded the beginning of the work on that building to be able to complete to where we are now. Um, Hyrum was quite specific about everything I, what we talked about, but he also made the point that we should have a plan about the boilers, we'll go into that in a bit. What was so awful about the system, and I didn't realize it at the time, they were on the board three months, whatever. Tina was shutting off the system, I'm off. Like, she had, the only way she could shut the system off was by using the emergency switch down at the boiler. I talked to Hyrum Matt about that today, he said, not only did that foul everything, not the foul of the current tanks. So everything was going haywire. I had no idea. Whatever, then I complicated the problem trying to resolve the problem of the six thousand dollars that we were responsible for, for that first year on the tail end of that lease for the heat. Spiked, by trying to switch suppliers in order to get a better rate on the, on, on the gas. In doing so, that put Code and Coda out of the mix. Plus, I was not happy with the response that they had given me when I had three people come and visit me to analyze the work that was being done, so all that was gone. Okay. So, so Tina was running the system that way, and then she at one point said to me, I spent fifteen thousand dollars on the system for all, for gas, I thought she was freaking nuts. She was right. She was spending fifteen thousand dollars on that system. Because if you take the six thousand dollars that we had to pay for the lease and the fifteen that Tina, we come up with for total, twenty-one thousand. I even asked Stephanie today to course, to corroborate what she told me in September, which was, they used six thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight, six, six thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight point eight gallons of propane last year. I asked her to answer that for me again, and she said, yes, that's true. I said, did you pay three twenty-five a gallon? She said, yep, I think I paid it for the entire year. Well, it doesn't take an idiot to, to multiply it together, that's twenty-two thousand dollars. Oh my god. This also corresponds with the energy report that was submitted to me when we had the pellet burner study back in twenty fifteen, and when we were considering getting a pellet for, for the study. And all of this is really, I reread everything over several times and talked to Chris Hever, who made the report in conjunction with Brent Mulling and a couple of other people. And the inefficient, the building's not that bad, but there's a lot of inefficiencies there. That is a separate piece. The, it, the lighting and the efficiency of the building is a separate piece now. I just wanna correct one thing that I might've told you all that was an error. And that was, I think I said that there were two systems in the, in the building. That's not accurate, that was not accurate. Basically, what we have is two air-to-air exchangers, one in the basement, under where we took all the chairs out, and one where the, we had a couple of blown pipes at, at the top of it. The function of those two exchanges is to do exactly what it says. It moves air from the outside to the inside, and there's little heaters in the, in the system that bring the, that bring the outside air up to temperature. That's that function. Then you, you have five different kinds of registers. You have four, five, I think it's fourteen zone valves and like eleven thermostats. This is the second time I had a nice meeting again with Hyrum today, the two of them were over there finishing up, I believe they're done today, talking about the entire system. And it's the second time I asked him, you told me that basically this is on, if you're building a house, building your own house like I did, do plumbing and electric, that's like stage one, we're at stage four, he said, this system is very complex. And it does not mean that we're not gonna have issues down the road with things that are thirty years old, control issues that could happen. Now, to give you an idea of what he has done, and I cut to the chase. Um, they've done a lot. I sent you all an email, I believe it was last week, and explained a, a bunch of it. I was very excited when I went there Saturday, because I turned off, I turned on every thermostat in the building. I started on top, right down to the utility room, building, utility room next to the bathroom, that's behind the bathroom, turned everything on, went back on upstairs and checked the heating, and everything worked. What was really nice is when you heard the zone valve go off, you were, pff. So this is new, I pro, I presented that to Hyrum today, he said, that's telling you the zone valve is shutting off correctly and is going to. When I left them today at four o'clock, I went back to see him the second time, I was only there like five minutes, they were working on, uh, the, the register in the, in the hall. And they were having some problems with the, I said, I'll talk to you tomorrow, the next day, see you later. I stayed out of their face, I've had a great relationship with that, couldn't be more active than this. But success is the, is the thing I'm looking for. And we, we seem to be getting there. And I hadn't done the final analysis, once they're done, but they seem to have been, they'd be done, done today. Um, Hyrum explained a lot to me about, there was a lot of wiring that was completely not correct down in the basement with respect to the transformers, with respect to the whole system, especially in relationship to, to air, air exchangers. He started explaining, I said, okay, thank you, I understand, but whatever. He seems to have gotten it correct, and I, and I, he, he explained to me some issues about the, about the time clock on the air-to-air exchangers and how to set up for only four hours a day, and what to do, and we're moving forward. Good news is, he's, shouldn't complete with all new thermostats, like I said in the, in the email. They're gonna, ones that are needed to be programmable are gonna be programmable, and there's five of them that are gonna be Wi-Fi programmable, and they've already started setting those up today, and I haven't gotten that something yet, but I'm gonna look to have uh, these people be contacted. Hyrum agreed to be one of the contacts, in other words, if something happens, system fails, he gets an email, I would, I would, I think the contact group should be, should be myself, Ms. Maggio, town clerk. I got, that all has to be set up into this. There's also a, you can help with this, what's that water bag thing that you said, as you put it?
Water, it's a water sensor, if your hot water heater floods and it will send you a, a notification that there's a flood.
Mm-hmm, so we're thinking about doing that too. Go ahead, Dave.
Can I make a suggestion, I sort of forgot about the, if you're setting up some notification thing?
Uh-huh.
You might wanna consider, um, I'm trying to think of whether, well, you might wanna consider utilizing a central email address that forwards to a bunch of you, rather than having whoever has to set it up hard-coded your email address and her email address. hard coded your email address and her email address. Like you could use, I don't know what we have, I don't know what gets you done with the Brookline dot select board one. Where are those Comcast email addresses? Don't we have, we have a Comcast email address?
Right, you have a dedicated.
I don't think anybody even checks this.
Well, it's Brookline.
No, but it gets, it gets forwarded to.
Right. And each one of you have your own separate email, so when I send it, it goes as a group and it goes to all of you plus the, is that what you think?
No, well, no, what I'm saying is, I would imagine, I mean, whoever is going to set this up isn't going to be, well, right, but six months from now, when you decide you don't want Doc to be the one who gets the emails or
Or whatever.
Or somebody gets off the board and you want somebody else to get on the emails. You're going to have to go through Code and Coda to change any of that stuff.
I think it's through, through local.
Well, Pool is the name of the company making the thermostat.
Right, they set up with them, is what it was explained to me.
Yeah.
This is a password I have.
Yeah, I kind of doubt that, but.
Okay, I think they were a little fuzzy about it too, because when I were first talking about, he wasn't sure about what would happen if the power went out? And what happens?
Nothing will happen. You won't get any emails.
Right, with the programmable thermostat, will that change? Because you got a time issue now. The time changes.
They're usually, they're usually not on your cell phone.
They'll probably have some battery backup.
Yeah.
The thermostat's on some kind of. He can set the programmable ones. I guess he means all of them, when all have battery backup.
In most.
Okay.
I think all, any digital thermostat will have a battery backup. But if the power goes out, if the Wi-Fi router goes out before the thing sends the alert, you won't get the alert.
Okay, so what do you think we should do?
But that's probably not really the, that, that's probably not what the issue is. If the power goes out, the power is gone now. So you.
Have to reset it anyway.
Yeah, it's when the thing itself stops. Presumably the power would still be on, so the internet access will still happen.
It's always hard wired and it's just the battery backup.
Yeah.
So go back to what you.
Well, no, I mean, I would suggest that you have it set up to go to the.
Email dot Brookline Vermont at gmail.
All of them have the same thing.
Same thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you can do it that way. That's fine.
He was talking about using the Comcast one.
Or some central, some email address that the board or the town clerk always has access to that won't change as people come and go off of the board. But, you know, it's, it's probably not worth worrying about, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry. I'll let you get back to what you're doing.
Okay, so where we're at right now is if they're done or just about done, I was going to ask Mark, we've already talked about it, to go meet with Hyrum, and I've got about two or three pages of, basically what I've done is reviewed all of Pete Noble's notes going back from 2015, at least three times. And what I'm going to do is have him come with me, Mark, and ask key questions to Hyrum Nap again that I've already made notes on and run through that. What I was going to offer to you all is if anybody in the select board wanted to be a part of that meeting, not because of the technical part, but because as he explained to me what we should do for consideration for down the road of changing those boilers. And I really thought it would be beneficial for people on the board to listen to what he had to say in reference to pellet burners, oil burners, gas, replace it with a gas or whatever. He had a lot of comments to make about how, how that system is and how it could have been improved. So if any, we're going to have that meeting. He and I, that's one of the major reasons why I went back a second time today, was to ask him if he wouldn't mind if other select board members could come to it too. The chances are we would go a little earlier, Mark, so I could go through all the the nitpicky stuff that I'm interested in, but when it came to the point in time, unless of course you wanted to be involved in it, when it came, came time to discuss a consideration of changing that boiler at some point. It's a good time to discuss it, because the burners are plus 30, plus 30 years old. They're not going to last forever. They can last another 20 years, who knows? But bottom line is if that, that goes, the building's down indefinitely, without a doubt. The only way you would do a fast, quick change, and we would be at the mercy of probably the vendor and supplier, is throw in another direct vent, gas furnace in five days. Who knows the price? Might not be what we want. So what Hyrum was suggesting to me is that we have a plan in place of the choice of what we think we should do down the road. This has to, doesn't have to be done for 30 days or six days or whatever. It's just a beginning plan to try to understand what we're going to do. So if anybody wants to be involved in that, you can open the chat.
So you make the appointment, just email everybody in the prime of the.
Okay.
So, so in conjunction with that, are you recommending, or is Hyrum recommending that within the next six months or 12 months, the furnace needs to be replaced?
No.
And we're forced to look at what options we have to take? Or is it premature right now to do that?
No. Answer both your questions. It's not premature to have a plan, but it's not, not, but it is premature to think that we're going to have to replace it within six months, like I said, for the last 10 years. But it is plus 30 years old. It's extremely inefficient. It's costing a lot of money in terms of fuel, not that that affects us at this point in time. But if we ever have a building met with it. So considerate, by looking and taking the time to look at it and to see what we, what we should consider doing. It's not a bad idea. In light of the fact that we've got all this money that's becoming available to us, that we don't know what we're doing with it yet. This is, to me, a prime time to consider it. And that's what this is, consideration. And I'm doing a lot of the analysis myself on my own. I've already called Margaret G. of Lincoln, which to get some ideas, and she's been calling back. She said she went through this. Whatever. I've already called efficiency for a while. I've already called Chris Hebb. We did the energy study. So I've already begun the understanding of the things that were done, the guys you, guys you heard before, and try to come, try to have a path forward in an easy direction in order to understand what we're going to do. Then we need to have some kind of, in my assessment, some kind of a plan on replacing those boilers. Especially, this is the second time that this has come to me. The first time was in 2015, when we were considering it, and we were going to consider putting a pellet system in, which is not what I'm saying we should do. I'm saying that's a part of the considerations. And the board shot it down because if a home aid poke, don't fix it. Well, now I'm hearing it from the plumber. The plumber said, you really should have a plan. Especially in light of all the supply issues now going on. There's also consideration of the kind of equipment that we would put in. All of the kind of equipment that's in there could be hard to fix and replace because of parts. He explained that to me as well. So in light of all the supply issues and, and, and this, oh, that, that, I looked up those furnaces. They were made from, in Montpel, New Jersey, I believe. Long gone, out of business. So if something ever breaks in that, we're done. But, question?
No, I was going to say, if you make the appointment, let us know.
Okay, I just, one other thing and we're good. And I'm sure it's going to get all thinking, but where we're at right now, I've gotten, Guy was kind enough to print up the budget and Judy Acapora finally got back to the beginning. And also, in the total, what I have right now, given what I heard, is as of today, I have, we have $10,925.34 in the kitty, but you're going to see AP warrant with bills due to COVID, COVID for 226553 with a grand total of 865981. Now, what I mean by part of the but is come throw in March for a lease payment. That's going to go at least to the rest of the work because they put so much time in. There were two guys there for the entire day. That system was a disaster. They've changed a lot. I will have a complete review of what they've done so you all can see what, what the money's been expended on. So the good, good news is this is getting fixed. It's working great. All the changes that they made went through me. And I really have to look at the thermostat side. I think that's all going to work out great for everybody. And as far as the money goes, we should be going into March with about a balance of 845, 8600. Going forward, if that's fixed, the only other meet, only other, how can I say that? The other maintenance things, we got our yearly inspection with the water system that's been running for 11 months, 11 fall. Thank you. And other than, the only thing that Mark is going to have to do for servicing, this is another thing that came up with maintenance. Change filters.
Filter system.
Air filters and water. Yep, that's it. And the batteries, backup batteries only have to be replaced like ever since. So plus, we're going to have Code and Coda, because it's service contract, to check the system. I'm going into that with him. How often you want to look at it, oh, wow, get that straightened out. And so we are working on that plan going forward. And if anybody's interested in that meeting, I'd be happy to have you all come. It's, Hyrum's really easy to talk to. He's really a nice guy. And they've worked very, very hard on that system. We're paying for it.
How many feet use the depth turns?
410,000. 400, I have, I have, I have two numbers.
You want to get moving on?
Yep, I'm done. I've heard 410, 440. I can't remember who. Pete Noble said one and Hyrum Nap said another, but somewhere in that range. 7,000 square foot, no, you gave me that figure. So I guess that's it. Thanks for your attention. Oh, we have a reckoning. That's why I go this far because that, that, that word's been, been, we have a reckoning with our buildings and that. We're going, we're going to get it.
I'm going to move on to communications. We had no good mail for us to review. The only email that I got, I got today, it is from Local 103 Greater Boston. It's a Freedom of Information Act request for the data collected for the electrical bid. I guess when we put it in the newspaper, they collect data on it. So I'm going to ask Guy, either requesting a copy of the bid results and the winning bidder and the expenses that was, the project was. So I left a mail. Now, they're willing to pay for any photocopying and postage that, that entails. So that's the only email that I have. So from here, I will move on to pay orders. Oh, oh, the other communication is I am going to leave tonight. And if you wanted to look at it, these were the letters that I had directed by the select board to write. There's one I told you about that I wrote to Todd Lowly about representing us at the Regional Emergency Management Committee meetings. I also, to whom it may concern, about the electrical bus letter of support. And this also has emails and a letter, a letter of support for the Hinton Trail project. So they've all been sent out and I'll just leave them. If you wanted to look at them, you can. They'll be, they'll be put into the folder. Okay, payroll. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, approve on payroll warrant 22-32 dated February 16th, 2022 in the amount of $3,877.38. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant 2022-32 for $3,877.38, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payroll order 2022, excuse me, yeah, dash 33 dated February 16th, 2022 in the amount of $10,014. May I have a second? Seconded by Stan. Any discussion? Me. Item Chesterfield Tire Service for the greater $330. Does that money come out of the money put aside for the number of hours the engine is run? That we collect a dollar an hour for repairs or?
I believe there's a separate.
Fun for greater?
Yeah.
All right, so I just wanted to say.
There is, there's a joint equipment maintenance. It's the one that's indicated below it. 2730.51 Equipment Fuel Parks, man.
Okay. And the other question I, the other question I, okay, that makes sense. The other question I had on here was the newspaper run of the ad for the RFP. Is that going to be billed against Brookline Meeting House or the town newspaper account?
I think it should be billed to the meeting house.
Not sure if it was or not.
It may not have been. You may have to tell.
So that should be billed to the meeting house.
I mean, I would think it.
I would think so also. Yes. So those are the only two questions I had in discussion. So I'll follow up on that meeting house. So that was the separation. Okay. All those in favor of approving accounts payable number 22-32 in the amount of $10,014, signified by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
So just a note on that, I mean, looking at it, it does look like that's where the treasurer put it.
Okay, I couldn't tell.
Yeah, I mean, it's the, because the account number is A730. It's not, it's, it's not a part of account one or account two. I assume A is the meeting house account I don't have it from. I'm glad to building repairs for that, so that's where they put it.
Well, that was just my concern. All right, set agenda for the reorganization meeting on Wednesday, March 2nd. I, I just pulled the, what was done last year, and I have copies of that, so I will get that agenda out. It's fairly straightforward, and then we'll put in there the RFPs, the two RFP approvals and the contract approval for Suzy's Little Peanuts. Remember, reminder, special select worthy via Zoom on Wednesday, the 23rd. The town informational meeting will begin at 6:30. Australian ballot voting on Monday, February 28th, 9 to 7 at Town Hall or by absentee ballot if requested. I forgot, also on the agenda, I can't even say that, the contract and the two RFPs. All right, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion?
I have a discussion.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to take this opportunity to, this is the last select board, regular select board meeting that we're going to have where we're all going to be here at the same time. I would like to thank all of you for the help and support you've given me. I would like to thank David Jones, who unfortunately is not going to run again. And he's done a great deal for our town and the whole select board itself has done a great deal of work and our hardware guy has done a great deal of work. And I'm looking forward to seeing some of the same faces back and hopefully my face will be back. But thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'll just briefly say thank to all of you for, you know, it's an honor to have served with all of you and spent time with all of you. And I'll still see you all around. And Peter, thank you very, very much for all of your efforts over the years. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
All right, so we've had a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor of returning this evening's meeting, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 8:43 PM. Thank you very much.